Bonnie, Lisa, you couldn't find anything in the office as far as the plan?
No, I can't.
Did you ask them to produce one again? Did you ask them to produce a plan? They must have a copy if they have a plan.
They had a big thick set of plans. Still, you know, that didn't show. From what I could see, it didn't show anything. It had the three supervisor's signatures on it.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Historical commission. Reports in back. Treasurers report, make a motion to approve the November 30th, 2015 treasures report as presented. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Payment authorizations, I'll make a motion to approve the November 2015 payment authorizations as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, Joe, aye. Bonnie, can I ask you a question on the treasures report? So what's going on with the revenue as far as the beginning?
Uh, I think it went up about $10,000.
So what's the totals?
The total EIT.
Yeah.
As of November 30th was 1.477 million dollars.
1.477, okay. Are you expecting one more payment, you think? Did you contact?
Um, I know that we'll receive payments into January and possibly February, but the amount will not be high from what I understand.
Did you look how Rosemary was doing it? Was she applying that to the previous year when we got a payment in January?
When EIT comes in, it's broken down by year. At some point we put stop to accept, not accepting payments prior year, but we are moving into the correct year.
Okay.
So for January and February, most likely the payments for 2015 will be moved back into 2015.
Okay.
And then maybe 2016 and at some point we order anything that's not in there.
Have you discovered like that cutoff point at all, or?
Um, I have to sit down with our honor.
Okay. New along Manchester Farms. Go ahead, Bonnie, sorry.
No, as of date, the roads have not been dedicated, so they are not on our liquid fuels.
Okay. Approval of master installment purchase agreement for 2016 Freightliner. Make a motion to approve entering into a master installment purchase agreement with Mercedes-Benz Financial Services USA LLC for the purchase of, purpose of purchasing via a financing contract, the 2016 Freightliner Model M2-106. Cap, oh, sorry, that's not, the cautionistic C124, 282 at a 3.85% interest rate. Questions or comments?
And I will say, just to make sure we didn't have to file anything, we were, the bond counsel, he does not, that's not corporation like which there. That's right close to right. Bond counsel thought it would, he's very particular to him, but something we have to make sure.
Is there anyone who can get a purchase?
That's a great.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Increased treasure bond.
Um, I met with our liquid fuels financial analyst and he let us know my bond is currently at $200,000 and it, for liquid fuels purposes, it has to be the minimum of what we receive from liquid fuels, which is over $300,000. Um, I asked JP what my bond needed to be and his answer was higher than $200,000, but less than the proposed budget, which was around 3.7 million. What, should I raise the bond too?
The idea is obviously your cash on the influct should be destroyed. These are some bits right here, so if you know the peak, the end of most, obviously the highest would be the budget and amount, but typically throughout different maps of year, it's not that.
Will we save going half of the budget enough?
Probably say the, pick about.
Be 1.85?
Okay, so raise it to closer to a million?
No, closer to 2 million.
Closer to 2 million, uh-huh.
What'd you say, 1.85?
1.85. Uh, new business. November 23rd, 2015, Western Chester County Regional UCC Board of Appeals meeting. A letter from Mr. McCormick. Bonnie, do you have any commentary on this?
I don't know anything about it, sorry.
Just that Joe McCormick attended the annual meeting.
Okay.
And see that we have the letter.
Okay, let's see, back here. All right, public participation. Do we have anybody who would like to speak again or speak for the first time?
Hello, gentlemen. I haven't been to a few meetings because I've been a little under the radar. However, this brought me out because, number one, this is just an absolute disgrace that you've had this much time to come up with a plan and have it. And I'm directing this at my naysayers here because if you're not in agreement with what's going on, then come up with a frigging way to solve it. I'm sorry. Okay, number one. Number two, I'm hearing lots of things drawn out about, um, let's see, attorney fees, solicitor things. I personally know of a person sitting up there that had a lot to do with a lot of the problems that we have now because of the solicitor fees from the past lawsuits that took place. Now, we're all sitting up here and this person is bringing up a lot of issues and throwing out a lot of things and saying all this stuff about how we need to find ways. So come up with ways to solve the problem, gentlemen. You don't want to pass a budget. Nobody wants to spend more money. When you go to the grocery store and stuff costs more money, do you just like not feed your family because it's more money? No, just come up with a way to solve the problem. So the way to solve the problem now, so that people keep their jobs and we keep our services, is you pass this budget, number one. And then number two, you have time to come up with ways to solve the problem. But you can't sit there and say that you're not, that you're looking over things and you've come up with things when you in fact, sir, are one of the biggest problems up there.
Are you referring?
Possibly. If you want to say it's you, then fine.
Sure, we know.
We, but look.
If you want to refer to me, go ahead, I'm okay.
I'm, I'm not going to refer to anyone specific because that person knows who was involved with the lawsuits, with people in our town that were trying to change zoning and with different things that went out, with signs being stolen from different campaigns. We all know who, who was involved in all this nonsense.
Is it?
Now, the reason I'm bringing this all up is because we all sit up there with holier-than-thou attitudes about not wanting more money to be spent. Prices go up, that's a fact of life. How you determine how you're going to solve your problem is another fact of life. Now, a budget didn't just come up two weeks ago. This has been an ongoing thing for the last eight years, as far as I can tell. And every, we put it off and put it off. You try to eliminate the road crew, who in fact bring in a great deal of their own money through maintaining roads. Okay, I'm sorry. But it just, I, I sat in the back and I was quiet, but I can't be anymore because if, if you're going to say that we have problems with budget, you should come up with solutions to it. And you can't come up with a solution by just saying, nope, not going to pay for it.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you.
Yep, in regards to that, if I was being passed out, I have. As soon as I came on this board, I immediately went after the medical. The medical, we were paying a lot for medical versus what we could do through the co-op. So I spent time with the board trying to get the medical plans out because with this township, you know, one department contributes 10% towards their medical and the other one contributes 0 to 3%. The medical plan for the PPO plan, it's a lot. I don't think, not one of you out there has that kind of plan for your own family or for yourself. And so one of the things, I wasn't able to change the contribution because there's contracts controlling. But one thing I could do is look for a service that offered a lower rate and maintain the same service. And that's what I was able to do. I mean, we were able to get some back. I mean, the thing that affects us is that the heart and lung, which has nothing to do with heart and lung. You know, as some of these guys might know, I mean, I've torn my disc for two years. Not necessarily to me, it's, it's, it's a heart and lung. I've had that same operation on my, both of my knees and I've been up and walking in three weeks.
And I respect a lot, but we had to go for the bigger picture.
We all, I mean, I, I've gone, this is my four years of been going through areas where this township is paying more. I had the former secretary survey 30 municipalities to see what they're paying for a solicitor. And she reported back to the board, we were paying the most. So that's why I had the solicitor put out for bid and we had other competing law firms. There's nothing against.
30 municipalities paid more than we do?
Yeah, that's what Denise said back to us. She said we were the most expensive.
Out of, out of which 30 did you select to ask her to check?
I, I didn't ask her. I asked her to contact the Secretary's Association and that's the one that responded. Do you know one that pays more?
Pays more than we do?
Yeah.
No, I don't know what it is about.
And why are you arguing Denise's fact finding?
Do you have that later?
She, you were on the board.
So you're sitting up there arguing, he's asking you a question. I don't understand.
I did, I just, yeah, she, yeah, it was documented, Joe. Denise reported back to the board on, on her questionnaire to.
I never, I don't recall that.
That's why we put it out for bid.
But I, I don't recall.
Do you recall voting to put the solicitor out for bid?
Yes.
Okay. Do you remember how you voted when we had lower rates coming in? Okay. So, I mean, we put the solicitor out for a reason because we had gotten lower rates. And that's what the, the secretary had discovered, that we were one of the highest. We are, in many areas, one of the highest municipalities, the surrounding municipalities around us. That's why we're getting clobbered in so many areas.
Yeah, the ones that surround us, look around you, where are we?
West Bradford.
Hello?
West Marlborough.
Yeah.
New Lynn.
Take West Marlborough, that's all.
Why?
West Marlborough Township is.
Why is it taken off? Like, why do you take, why do you take two thirds? Why do you take two thirds of the municipalities surrounding this valley?
West Marlborough Township.
Why can't they be averaged in?
West Marlborough Township is a country, they want no hard roads. They want, they're owned by people that have a lot of money. They're, they don't even have 8,000. They're lucky if they have 2,000 people living in the township.
Yeah, but Brian, you can't dismiss surrounding municipalities.
They did, they're making difference. You've got to talk apples to apples, Joe. Apples to apples.
Ahmed, please, Joe. I have, and, and one thing I have, I mean, I have gone, when I was at arbitration or negotiations, when I first came on the board, I did. I went to Valley Township. I went to Sadsbury. Would you admit that Valley Township has crime? Close to, close to Coatesville as well, right? Am I right?
We have crime, we have crime too.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, I, I went to Valley Township. I went to Parksburg. I went to Sadsbury. I went to municipalities around here and I got their budgets to see where, what they were at so I can get a fair rate of what we're paying. To not look at that, to not look at what, you have to be able to compare what you're paying versus other municipalities. It's the only way you can gauge it. Alice, could you gauge this? Why dismiss that? When we're so much higher in certain areas, how can you easily dismiss the, oh, we're just East Fallfield, we're just going to pay more? Why do we have to be the suckers of Chester County? We have to wake up here and realize that we need to be able to gauge this. Otherwise this municipality is going to become very expensive, very fast. We're already at that point. And that's what has to be analyzed here. And you could say to this board that this is, you know, if this board has been active throughout all the years that I've been up there, I would say, fine, and then, you know, we're, we're at that point, we've cut here or cut there and there's nothing more we can do. But I can tell you for a fact, there's been very little oversight, very little oversight by these supervisors, including myself, because we've given up like a, a, a department heads over, over, over certain departments. Liaison decisions have been dismissed. There's no one watching anything. Time cards, no one's watching anything. Nothing. And then when we do look at the time cards and discover a problem, no one's doing anything about it. You don't have a good government up here and I'll tell you that for a fact. They put me in that. But there is a serious problem here that you will pay for. And it's not necessarily easy to say that, well, everyone should just pay a real estate tax. There are a lot of folks here paying the earned income tax. So they have to pay that plus the real estate tax now. So they're being, they're being double taxed. And then not to address the trash fee, like a lot of people had said, hey, we'll at least take the trash fee out, put that into the tax so you have a full deductible. This budget is, is, is huge. Nothing was cut.
And I certainly appreciate your comments, although I don't agree. But again, it goes back to, if this budget's so bad, where is the proposal that you think we should, or the budget you think we should pass? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't understand how you, like, we're not the suckers of Chester County, although we'd probably look at it like that if we don't pass a budget, if we have a 2-2 vote by the end of the year. So that's my question. I mean, if this budget's so bad, where is, where's your budget? Or where, where do we go? Mr. Mash?
Here's the bottom line as I see it tonight. You have four gentlemen up there that already voted twice on this thing. I'm sure you voted in good conscience of what you think is good or not good for, you know, the, the township. The, the bottom line is, the, the signing vote is not here.
I did, I did try to contact the board. I called, I called at 8:00.
One side or the other makes no sense to me. That, that's all I will say. But thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Scott?
Yes, uh, the earned income tax, does it, does my contract come in monthly? And/or what is the contract? Because it should be that they have to send us the money monthly. That would help so much with your cash flow and your expenses.
Weekly?
Weekly? Oh, wonderful. Okay, good. So we're, that, that flow's coming. Legal expense, I would say, I would object to the solicitor spending any time on outside party asking a question about whether they can raise money for the police department. That's up to the individual. I do not want to see any of my tax dollars being spent on assisting the private citizen. I think there should be policy that only the board of supervisors is requested to have the solicitor spend hours on research. So that would assist a little. I totally, our legal expenses are outrageous. I suggested, and this is what took me down also, that a 1099 be issued to the solicitor. Boy, that would have screwed up the whole Gestapo, oligarchy, plutocracy government that we have in Chester County and who control this board, or the, at least two of the board. And a city right next to you, it's the Lamb Law Firm, along with Alan Novak, Skip Ryan, Sam Stratten. That is the subject. We have, they are the ones controlling this Chester County and all the municipalities. Yes, they do.
Thank you, Sharon. I, I will say, I really want to gauge you, but I will say I'm not controlled by any of the people you just mentioned or the, anybody else. I made my decisions based on what I think is right for the residents, for the township.
Our comprehensive plan was rigged by them.
Okay. If you, if you're of that opinion, you're certainly.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact. Everything I speak.
What I will say this though, as well, this was brought earlier about legal fees and about switching to a different firm. And yes, I did vote to retain the firm that we have. And I think that, and the other thing that people don't see about legal fees either is if you switch firms, there is a lot of things, things that come up from years past where the new firm's going to have to contact your firm for information anyways, you're almost going to double bill. So I think that the, the assertion that we're just going to save all this money by going with a firm that's $5 less an hour is, is, is just wrong.
That was not the rates. There wasn't one firm that was $5.
Sure, you, yeah, you voted for John Carnes. His rate was $5 less an hour than Lane Macklin, I believe. No?
His rate is at 150?
I don't recall that. I thought, I recall it being like a $5 difference.
No, there wasn't one that was $5.
Well, if you pay, I mean, what if you're paying both? I mean, that's, so.
Right. So, I mean, you live your life one good lifestyle. I mean, I don't live that lifestyle. I pay attention to my finances and I check it.
Thank you, Ed, for your intimate knowledge of my lifestyle. I have no idea what you're referring to, but, yeah.
Well, you posted it up on the Facebook page of who you're having parties with and who you're drinking. And you're putting that information out there that anyone that wanted to look at it is putting it out there.
Anybody who wants to look at my Facebook page is certainly more than welcome to, to look at it.
Because you're not impartial, you're friends with the people that you're giving raises to. So you're not impartial, Joe. You can't, you can't.
Who might go and get a blood?
Who might get a racist right? What do you mean?
We need to focus on the budget.
I have to ask one question as I, I gave you guys all props all year long. I got through these meetings so pissed. If Mr. Toth was here tonight to break the deciding vote and he votes no, you're still at the stalemate. Because you still have to pass the budget. So it doesn't matter if Mark's here or not. If he votes no, the only way we can move forward is if he votes yes.
Correct.
So Mark's out of the picture, we'll go drag him out of his house. That, that doesn't mean anything. So at this point, the only thing that makes any sense, regardless of whether you're not going to change the, the budget in January with the new supervisor come over or whatever, but nobody can leave here tonight until you say yes and then you change. I mean, that's the reality. Is that, is that correct? I mean, we can't.
It's not correct.
It's not correct.
What's, what's not correct? It's what everybody changes, not correct. What he said though.
I'm just saying, even if Mark is here to vote no.
Yeah.
You still, you still can't balance the budget until, you know.
Exactly, that's what.
That's all I can add is you can't, you can't do anything.
And I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I'd like to do that.
That, that would be my main concern is.
Should we do it next Tuesday night?
Before the end of the year.
Next Tuesday night here at 6:00.
And the only thing I can say, I, I'm a Valley resident. I used to live in East Fallfield, but I'm a Valley resident. We did lose our taxes a couple of years ago and I think everybody did support it. There was nothing drastic. What you're looking at here, on average, is $39 a month for the average home in East Fallfield Township. Most of us will probably agree, yes, coastal school taxes, like, those are the, those are the ones we got to be going after to tighten their budget. I mean, when you look at, what are you saying, $18 a year or $18 a month? Is that what it is? I paid the crooks at Dish Network like a hundred bucks a month to watch TV, so. I mean, when you really look at the money you're talking about, I get it. Nobody wants to pay taxes, nobody wants to do more. It's small.
I have to pay someone to watch TV and I can't pay 300 for my fees.
But the problem is, it won't be measured.
No, and I get that. I'm just, you know, I know, I know you guys campaign and, and everybody said that they don't want taxes and I think we all get that. Nobody wants to pay more, as everybody said.
There's people here that want to.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that. It's just, you know, there's got to be some give and take in order to, to affect the rerun government. I think it was mentioned about the state budget. You know, Mr. Scott said that, you know, here we are, sitting here now, our county is withholding money back to the state because the budget's not passed. And that's just a vicious cycle we're all going to be in here, even locally, you know? And what happens, you know, when, when nothing gets done? So there's got to be something that's done, whether you re-advertize tonight and you spend more expense to re-advertize the budget and we all convene again, I'm happy to come. But at this point, if it's 2-2, it's 2-2. It doesn't matter if Mark's here or not, you know, unless he votes yes, so. Thanks.
The one thing I'll just clarify and just make sure it's clear is.
Use the microphone, please.
Yes.
Discussion about the proposed amending the budget in the new year, opening it back up. And, you know, second class township code says no proposed second amended, amended budget shall before final adoption be revised upward in, upward in excess of 10% during the year. So that's an upward adjustment. So in the new year, if it is reopened, the code is silent as to a downward adjustment. That's my opinion. So it doesn't speak to.
Just because you pass the budget doesn't mean you have to spend money. I know ways to cut costs.
The, the only shall, the only shall in the code, the mandated language is the budget, balanced budget by the end of the year, that has to be advertised 20 days. So that's, that's the requirement by the end of the year, that's the link to do in the new year.
So if you guys want to reopen it in January after you vote, so.
I just, because there was some back and forth about that stat limitation.
I was just going to make a point earlier, so everyone's aware if they didn't read the sheet. Our legal fees for the solicitor this year are estimated to be $32,747 of a $2.7 million budget. So that's a fraction of a percent. I don't think we can cut much more there. And just FYI, for those who care about the legal fees that we pay, they're minuscule compared to anything else in our budget.
I'd just like to make one quick point to the chairman.
Sure.
Do you know my name?
What's that?
Do you know my name?
I, no.
You know, I've been, I've lived in this township for 30 years. I have this township's best interests at heart. I watch you call everybody in here by name, they come and spoke. And you tell me that's not a sweet audience? That's one point, I just want to bring that to light, all right? The other point is, all these people in here, how many real occurrences have you had locally with the police other than speaking to us? You have a friend here? Okay, so we've got five, five and a half in the township. I must be living in a dream world. I must be living in a really dangerous township. I've lived here 30 years and never had an issue. And I live out in the country, I live on gravel road. I think you ought to be responsible for what you spend. That's your guys' job, you're responsible for what you spend.
I, I need something to say.
Go ahead.
I found an incident a couple of weeks ago where I locked my goddaughter in the car in East Fallfield. And if I had to say please.
Use the mic.
Use the mic.
Martin, what, what? Use the mic. Go.
I had an incident a couple of weeks ago where I locked my goddaughter in the car in East Fallfield. It took about seven minutes for a police officer to get, to help get my goddaughter out. I was scared to death. I locked one in my car. That happened to me, that's one time. That would have happened this summer, it could have been critical if I had to wait for a state police to come.
My question is crime.
It's, it doesn't matter whether it's crime or it's, or it's an emergency for something else.
It's activation of 911.
That's right. I would probably have waited for an hour and a half, but a nice police officer came that always cruises in my neighborhood in East Fallfield. They are very important to be there. I live in Manchester Farms and this happened in Providence Hill. I see these guys come around two, three, four, five times a day at night when I'm sleeping. They keep us safe. The cop couldn't have been nicer. They did that for me. That is very important to me.
Tell you to pass the budget, now turn to the residents against each other. Do the right thing, pass the budget, let's move on. Deal with your fiscal responsibility in 2016 with your new board supervisor. Find ways to cut, let's pass the budget, let's be moving. While you're doing that, the residents piss on each other. There's no reason for it.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. Ms. Scott, I wouldn't apologize because I heard Mr. Root say, use the word attack against you and I, I by no means meant to attack you. I was merely trying to feel out your, your feelings to what was going on here tonight. And also my point was, when she fills that third seat, as we're starting to all say here tonight, somebody please pass this so we can get to the January meeting and review it. And if you want to drop it back to a 1%, which would be a more balanced budget, because if I read the budget, we're going to have surplus. Somewhere along the way, we got to get out of here tonight. You're not going to go to jail chuck if we don't pass this thing tonight, but you were the one that finally said yes last month to get us out of last month and move us here tonight. So here we are again. So move it on to next month, hash it back out again. You'll have your third vote to open it back up again. Our platform is to not raise taxes, as you've all said, and as we've all said. We don't want our taxes raised, but we want to live in a good community and do the right thing. So somebody please say yes and let's move on. Thank you.
Most of what I wanted to say has already been said, but I did want to add to the gentleman over here. My grandmother was very ill and lived with us up until she passed in 2007. And the few times that I have had to call 911, these guys were the ones that responded first. They got there before the ambulance did and they assisted and they helped keep her alive until she was able to get to the hospital. So it's not about the crime rate. They're here for us no matter what. So it's important to me to know that when I press 911, I know one of these guys is going to come. Orgas, we've got a, we've got a female officer. I mean, that's, crime has nothing to do with it. We need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
In reference to the legal fees, that's just a budgeted amount, that's what you expect. That's not going to be actual. So what you could report is actual in years past. You know, that's just a budgeted amount.
There we go. I have it right here for you. Legal services solicitor. 2013 actual, $48,000. 2014 actual, $46,000. 2015 budget, $45,000. Year-to-date, as of November 24th, $30,000. Projected to the end of the year, $32,000, and we still budget it for $45,000 next year. Again, it's still a very, very small fraction of a percent of our budget. A needed portion of our budget for legal advice.